Good afternoon, everyone. This is a meeting in the Land Use Committee. Just please remember to mute yourself whenever you are not speaking. We have one bill that we're going to hear this afternoon. That is City Council Bill 20-0590. This is the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance and operation of a parking lot on the property known as 1301 through 1325 Etting Street, Block 0396, Lots 051, 052, 053, 054, 055, 056, 057, 058, 059, 060, 061, 062, and 063. Also, 505, 507, 509, and 511 West Lafayette Avenue with Block 0396, Lot 019, 020, 021, and 022. And the alley adjacent to 1325 Etting Street is outlined in red on the accompanying plaque. Public notice requirements have been met. And before I go to the sponsor, Matt, you want to call roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Members of the committee, if you could respond when I call your name, so I can record that you're here. Chairman Reising?
Here.
Vice Chair Sneed?
Here.
Councilwoman Clark?
Here.
Councilwoman Costello?
Here.
Councilwoman Dorsey?
Here.
Councilwoman Pinkett?
Here.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Here.
And Councilman Stokes?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, would you like me to go over the PowerPoint?
Yeah.
All right. This is just a brief PowerPoint on WebEx committee hearings. Each participant should have the following controls in the center bottom of their screen. On the left, you have the microphone control. Reminder, please mute yourself whenever you're not speaking. Next to that is control for your video. We ask that when you're speaking, please turn the video on, but otherwise feel free to leave it off. In the middle, we have the participants button that will allow you to see the participants in the hearing. Next to that, we have the chat function. You can use that to let us know if there's an issue, technical or otherwise, you'd like to raise. And then next to that, more options, which I'll talk about more in a second. And then when you're ready to leave the meeting, on the far right is the button to do that. Under the more options, when you hit that, you should have the option to raise your hand. We ask that anyone who's joining us from the public use that to let us know if you'd like to testify. And the top right-hand corner, you have options for your view. You can view the presenter's screen with no participant videos, the presenter's screen with the participants shown below, or all participants in grid. Some best practices for WebEx hearings. Try to find a quiet space with good light and a strong internet connection so you can be seen and heard. Turn on your video when you're speaking. Identify yourself before you speak. Mute yourself when you are not speaking. Speak slowly and clearly. Be present, be patient, and wear headphones with a microphone to cut down on background noise if possible. Public testimony for computer users. All public testimony is going to be coordinated by the committee staff. Please be patient. And we ask that attendees who have joined by computer use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify or that you have a question. And we ask that each speaker state their name before testifying. Anyone who's joining us by phone, we won't be able to identify you by name. And so we will unmute each caller individually during the public testimony portion of the hearing. Attendees will hear two beeps when you're unmuted. And if you do not wish to testify, you can say you have no comments. If you do wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of your testimony. And if we're not able to understand the caller, we may ask you to call back in hopes of getting a better connection. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Matt. At this time, I'm going to call on the sponsor of the bill, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This ordinance is a long-time company. This has to do with a property directly behind Bethel AMU Church, which has been in the community for over a century, which they have maintained for over 20 years. They have utilized it as overflow parking for the surrounding community. This property was transferred to Bethel back in 2016, maybe 2017. So it was sold from the city to the church. The church has plans to improve the property. There are letters of support from both the Upton Planning Committee and the Historic Marble Hill Community Association. In addition, I have been in discussions with representatives from the church on further community accommodations that can be made, including but not limited to ensuring that residents have the ability to park there with a hang tag or a placard during hours that the church is not hosting services or events. So this is essentially memorializing what had been the current condition for a 20-plus year period. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate you holding this hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. To any of my colleagues, I mean, I went through this on a planning commission. Everything seemed to be, you know, the i's dotted, the t's crossed. But any of my colleagues have any questions or concerns? No? Okay, thank you, Councilman Costello. At this time, we're going to go on to agency reports. Let's start with planning staff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Eric Tiso for the Planning Commission. This bill was reviewed by the Planning Commission in their meeting of September 10th, where it was recommended to be approved with two conditions. Number one, the parking lot be approved by the site plan review committee. And second, that the parking lot meet the requirements of the landscape manual. These are both things that are required by the zoning code as part of the normal development process anyway. But the bill has preceded those ordinary reviews from happening because of the end of legislative session is approaching rapidly. And it needs to go now so that they don't run out of time. So those are routine sorts of things. We also noted in our staff report that there is a pedestrian alley in the middle of these properties that should be closed at a future point in time. And I take note that the law department recommended that the approval of the conditional use should wait for that alley closure to happen. Sorry if that caused any confusion. I'm not sure if that's actually necessary. Why I had mentioned it is because alley and street closings come to the Planning Commission as an exercise of their master planning authority, that the Planning Commission needs to make a finding that there's no further public need for that alley or street. So it's trying to put that text into the staff report, have it dealt with by the Planning Commission, to save a second hearing from being needed when that future closure should happen. Looking at the proposed plan that came with the bill, it looks like it meets all of the normal parking lot design requirements. I'm not seeing anything that should be an overt concern. And the portion that is the alley bed, which is really a paper alley, it's not used or, you know, really designed as a distinct alley today, will not be impacted by the design as shown. So I don't know that we need to have the use bill be held for that closure, because I understand the title work process can take a year or more sometimes to do, even though they should be able to get a right of entry. So just wanted to clarify why I had made mention of it. It was just to try and save a step for future and avoid a second planning commission here. And with that, we recommend approval of those two conditions.
Thank you, Eric. Any of my colleagues have a question or concern?
Mr. Chairman?
Your Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say I concur with the Planning Commission's recommendations and agree with the amendments that have been proposed by the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other committee members or colleagues? No? Okay. Thank you, Eric. BMZA?
The BMZA recommends approval of this bill.
Thank you. DOT?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Liam Davis with Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report, which is defer to the planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the law department.
Hi, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the law department. We just noted, as Eric Tiso noted, that this area encompasses part of what's essentially a paper alley that hasn't yet been closed or sold. And so we recommended an amendment that just referenced that and said, obviously, you can't exercise the conditional use on that part until it's sold. But, you know, we're prepared to approve it either way.
Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Appreciate it. So the law department is favorable?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. HCD?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our report in support of the bill.
Thank you. BDC?
Raven Thompson for BDC. We stand by our report. Favorable.
Thank you. Parked Authority?
Hello, Mr. Chairman and committee members. My name is Brett Thorne. I'm a new planner with the Parking Authority.
Welcome.
Good to be here and looking forward to working with you all. Yeah, we have reviewed the bill and the site plan, and we do not oppose passage of the bill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any questions, my colleagues on the committee, before we go into? Councilwoman Clark, you have the floor.
Yeah, just, I probably should understand this, but I don't. Are we keeping the law department's amendment as it is or not? Because apparently, this can be handled administratively by the Planning Commission to close this alley. But this amendment is pretty specific that they can't do anything till the alley gets fully purchased and consolidated. So is that?
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman, I mean, Hillary, you want to reinstate or stay over what you said earlier to answer?
Yeah, we're prepared to approve it either way. I think if you don't want that language, you might want to just note that, you know, without the closure and sale of the paper alley, you would, what Eric Tiso said, a right of entry.
Right.
I think that would be preferable.
Either way.
I think that would be preferable, because a lot of people read these things that are behind desks and counters, and it gets confusing.
Yeah, well, they're going to, it's not going to be, the law department not giving a unfair report, they're just...
No, I know.
Yeah, so, Councilman Costello, did you say you want to chime in?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I don't think, I certainly appreciate law department's concerns that they've raised. I don't think they are necessary in terms of adopting the amendment. My question is to Eric Tiso in response to Councilwoman Clark's point there, just to confirm that this can be closed and a right of entry granted by way of administrative order. Is that correct? And can you explain your legal background and justification for taking such action?
Yes, that would be my understanding, though the approval for the right of entry doesn't come from planning, just the finding that there's no further public need for that right of way would come to the Planning Commission. And that's fairly routine, just because of the long lead time to do that title work to actually get the closure to happen. And I think it's also probably rational to make sure that the use can be approved before you spend all that time and effort anyhow.
Right, so the right of entry would be granted by DOT?
I believe so.
DOT, okay, thank you. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clark, are you good?
Not yet. So are we eliminating that amendment from law?
Well, the law department's just going to go along favorable. We don't have to do an amendment.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Right, you could mention that you're going to get a right of entry instead of a full-on sale, or, you know, or you could not mention it. I mean, it's still legal either way.
Let's not mention it.
Yeah, I'm good.
Hillary?
I'm good.
Yeah, I mean, in this instance, it's a paper alley anyway, is my understanding.
Right. Okay, we don't have to sort of weed. Anyone else? No? So at this time, let's go with public testimony. Matt, thank you, Councilwoman Clark, for your insight.
What? Oh, yeah.
Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we start, just remind everyone who's joining by computer to please use the raise hand function if you would like to testify. You have one person with their hand raised. Deana T.
Oh, I didn't realize I had my hand raised.
Do you have any testimony?
Well, I am a resident of Marble Hill. I believe that they should have the parking lot. I think it'll benefit all of the residents. I am on the 400 block of Moser Street, and I believe it'll help, you know, consolidate a lot of the parking issues that we have on Sundays and Wednesday evenings. And I've also been to many events at the church and believe that they need the space. So I'm hoping that they will be granted the space.
Thank you, Deana. Anybody have a question for her? Councilman Costello, out of curiosity, before we move on, how many parking spaces is there, by the way? Just out of curiosity, you know?
Oh, God, I'm going to say...
Is it 34?
No.
No?
No, I think it's a little more than that. I want to say it's probably the number of 50.
50? That sure has a paper hood, yeah.
It's hard to visualize because of the paper alley and because the current condition of the lot is, you know, dirt and stone crush run. And I'm having trouble visualizing it in my head, but I'm going to guess about 50.
Okay, thank you.
The file says 35.
Who?
Got it.
Matt, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one other person. Marty Petrelli. Mr. Petrelli, are you there? No response. Mr. Chair, we have one caller who I'll unmute now.
Okay, go ahead.
Caller, you're unmuted. If you have any testimony? No response. Mr. Chair, I think that is it for public testimony.
Okay, thank you, Matt. If, before we make a motion to move to finding of facts, is there any other questions or concerns from the committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Councilman Costello?
I just had one thing I just wanted to add. If you'll indulge me for about 30 seconds.
Go ahead, you got the floor.
Thank you. I need about 30 seconds to dig it up here.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, while he's doing that, maybe I could ask a question.
Go ahead, you got the floor.
Thanks. Just, I'm curious, from the planning department, if this site is subject to any stormwater requirements?
I can actually answer that, or I can answer the first half of that, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay.
Go ahead, you got it.
So I've been engaged in discussions with the church, and they've already retained a stormwater engineer. So, and I can't tell you if the site is, what the specific requirements for that site are, but they have already agreed to essentially a baseline level of requirements in terms of stormwater management for the site. They want to ensure that they're good neighbors and that they're not having a negative impact on either the surrounding public right of way or the surrounding properties. I'll refer to Eric Tiso for the rest.
Yeah, that is accurate. So the plans, since they disturb more than 5,000 square feet of area, they would require stormwater management review, and that would be picked up as part of site plan review and the normal development review side. And of course, as the program requires, they have to treat the water on the property. They can't send it off the property.
Thank you. One other question. Is there any sort of assessment done at this point? I mean, last year, there was a lot of research that came out about heat island effect.
A couple minutes so we can figure it out.
Looking at this site, it just reminds me that this is, you know, surrounded by residential houses in a neighborhood with a lot of black roofs. It's exactly the kind of place where the heat island effect is really impactful. Just wondering if we are doing any sort of assessment of that heat island kind of impact when creating such parking lots?
Sure, that was actually one of the things that led to the creation of the landscape manual with our new zoning code, because previously, the forest conservation program was the only real way that we could get at that. And that presented with two challenges. Number one, it would only affect properties where there was 20,000 square feet of disturbance, which is almost half an acre. And it didn't catch a lot of sites that were smaller than that. I don't have the total area in front of me of what this lot is, whether it does or doesn't trigger forest conservation. But in any case, even if it generated a requirement for plantings, it didn't say where. So they could pack all of the plantings in one corner of the property, and it would technically meet the requirements of forest conservation. So we wanted the landscape manual to apply to smaller properties with lesser disturbances. That's where that 5,000 square feet comes from, because it has to trigger stormwater management and site plan review, and then that's when landscape manual kicks in. But it gets at the where and how. So for parking lots, there's a perimeter screening requirement. We also try and get plantings of trees interior to the parking lot to create shade on the parking lot to minimize that heat island effect. So it's kind of baked into the design for plantings around parking lots as part of the landscape manual.
Screening? Screening as in, like, this lot is going to have to have a fence or something up around it?
Does not necessarily need to be a fence, but frequently, we want to have the landscape around the street edge to get more pedestrian planting.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Dorsey. We'll have technical difficulty from staff, so we're going to go on recess for a couple minutes, and then we'll get back. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry I got a break in. We're ready to come out of recess. There was an audio problem with one of the callers, and so make sure we keep this clean. Is, Matt, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we had a participant note that they were having audio problems. So, Mr. Petrelli, I've just unmuted you again to see if we're able to hear you. And not hearing anything. Mr. Petrelli, anyone else who is having difficulty, you can use the call-in number and join as a caller, and I'll go back through the calls again in a moment to give the opportunity to testify.
I know we had a caller who also called in. It would be great to hear what that person's comments are. If they wanted to call in the call-in number and try again, Matt, if the chairman would be so kind as to accommodate.
I'm good, let's keep it clean. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll go ahead and unmute the two callers we have in now. First caller, you should have just heard two beeps. If you have testimony, please go ahead. And you'll bear with me one moment.
Both of you, go ahead.
And we have one other caller. No response. And, Mr. Chair, with your permission, we can wait a few more moments for anyone who's trying to call in to get through. The call-in number is on the city council calendar.
Yes, to the committee and who else is listening, the gentleman's name is Marty Petrelli. He emailed saying he cannot get his audio to work, and then neither can other members of our community. So the woman, Diane, or whatever, she got through. So he's saying he's having audio to work, can't work. So he's saying he's having audio to work, can't work. So what Matt, our staff person to the committee, is emailing Mr. Petrelli. Right, Matt? Did you do that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I wrote back that the committee would note the written comments that were submitted through the Q and A function, and I can read them for the record if you'd like.
Yeah.
Oh, Matt, Mr. Chairman, yes, I would very much like those comments to be read.
Yeah, let's keep it clean, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is from a participant from the public, Marty Petrelli, reads, "I am a senior. I can't be dragging trash cans to the end of the alley. I really oppose to what you all are trying to do. So I hope for once you all do what is the right, what is right for the homeowners and taxpayers in this neighborhood, do the Christian thing."
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to address that comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
That's completed. Yeah, so first, this is about the 15th different reason that has been raised by Ms. Petrelli as to why she's not in support of this parking lot here. Ms. Petrelli has, on numerous occasions, accused me of being a member of the Bethel AME Church Board of Trustees, which is factually inaccurate. I am in fact a member of the Board of the Bethel Empowerment and Wellness Center. It's important to note that the Bethel AME Church and the Bethel Empowerment and Wellness Center are two separate corporate entities. I will also note for the record that neither entity has ever endorsed me or provided me with any campaign funding. All nine of the nonprofit boards which I sit on, which I am not compensated for any of them, are listed on my ethics form, which is always filed on time and is publicly available. I will also note that there are letters of support from the Historic Marble Hill Community Association and the Upton Planning Committee from approximately three to four years ago, of which Ms. Petrelli regularly attends those meetings. Those two letters of support are in fact provided in the bill file, which was provided to our colleagues, Mr. Chairman. I've been talking with a number of neighbors, including homeowners on 1300 block of Druid Hill Avenue about this. I've engaged in discussions with Bethel AME Church and am going to be convening a meeting in the next two weeks to get an MOU executed between Historic Marble Hill Community Association and Bethel AME Church to get all of these concerns worked out. The long story short of why Ms. Petrelli is upset about this is because she's no longer going to be allowed to park her two boats on the parking lot, her two boats which she has been parking there illegally and free of charge for years. Marty further subscribes to a conspiracy theory that as a member of the Bethel Empowerment and Wellness Center Board, which is for a community center at 1429 McCullough Street, that we are seeking to put a methadone clinic in that facility. I want to be explicitly clear in no uncertain terms, under no circumstances, literally over my dead body, would I allow outside of legal bounds a methadone clinic to be installed in my district and would do everything humanly possible to kill that, just as I did for the proposed methadone clinic at the corner of Dolphin Street and Pennsylvania Avenue and Upton kitty corner to Furman L. Templeton Preparatory Academy, as well as my actions in the effort to kill the proposed methadone clinic across the street from Arena Players in Seaton Hill. I'd just like to get all of that information out there on the record in response to Ms. Petrelli's concerns, which have also extended to her filing and another neighbor filing to have an inspector general's report or audit conducted of both the transaction from four years ago as well as the plans to do this variance today in front of this committee. Thank you for indulging me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. We have the Minister of the Church.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Patrick Claiborne?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon, Minister.
Yes, first of all, thank you all so much for hearing our bill and hearing our hearts. Again, we have taken care of that property for 30 years when the property did not belong to us and, you know, snow removal, trash removal, all that, you know, and we were favorable with that. And when the opportunity came to purchase the property, we did so. And to the specific concern about the alley for trash, I know that the land use people have talked to us about it. That alley is not being touched at all. They're already back in, take the trash, and they go back out. So anything that we do with the parking lot will not interrupt any trash pickup for the residents on 1300 block. Again, thank you all so much for being in support of us. We look to be favorable neighbors to each and every one. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Since you went into that rabbit hole, any other discussion? No? Okay, so any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other thing I wanted to touch on the fact.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And Hillary, please correct me if I'm wrong or I've not adequately addressed each of these. But the use of a parking lot in our eight district requires conditional use approval by ordinance, specifically Baltimore City Code, Article 32, Table 9-301 in the R8 section. In order to approve any conditional use, the city council must find the following four things. Location, construction, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use would not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. In response, I will note that improvements to this parking lot are going to improve the condition around this property. They're going to make the area nicer. They're going to provide a parking amenity in close proximity to nearby neighbors, and I believe that that is the opposite of being detrimental to or endangering the public health, safety, or welfare. Number two, the use would not be precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan. To my understanding, there is not an applicable urban renewal planning in that area. Mr. Teesaw from Department of Planning can correct me if I'm wrong, and therefore this does not preclude any other existing law, including potentially an applicable urban renewal plan. Number three, the authorization would not be contrary to the public interest. Quite the contrary is we have letters of support from Upton Planning Committee and the Historic Marble Hill Community Association. And finally, four, the authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of this code, which I believe it does. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer to Mr. Teesaw or Ms. Rui to tell me if I got anything wrong.
Both of you. Hillary and Eric, you want to respond to Councilman Costello's comments?
Yeah, they were great. They certainly satisfied all the required findings of fact. The city code also talks about like required considerations. I'll send that list really quick to the councilman. I think he covered most of them, but I will send that in case he wants to go over them as well, but otherwise, fine.
And in case it comes closer to hand, those required considerations are on page two of my staff report, which would be page three of the PDF, and all of that captioned by the councilman sounds very similar to what I wrote in my staff report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Costello, you have any more to add before we take?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you'd be kind enough to indulge me, I would like to review page three of that to ensure everything is in order with respect to not only the findings of fact, but the requirements. And Eric, you said that's on page three?
Yeah, page three of the PDF, because we have a cover sheet, it would be page two of the staff report. It's the bottom half of the page. And there's 14 items enumerated there.
Yep, give me one second. Yes. As a further guide to its decision on the facts of each case, the MTA must consider the following are appropriate. Nature of the proposed site, including its size and shape. Let me take a step back. These are all things that have been considered by the Planning Commission, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so then all 14 of these required considerations have been satisfied, is that correct?
That is our position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concerns are satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, could I have a question to move the finding of facts?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the finding of fact, up, finding of facts.
Second, Councilwoman Costello, do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of the finding of facts, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, move the finding of fact. There we go to the amendment. Do I have a motion to move the amendment?
I would move.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Costello.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to move the amendment from the Planning Commission only.
Two amendments.
The amendment package from the Planning Commission. Yes, it's.
Thank you.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Costello, seconded by Councilwoman Clark. What are the packets of amendments? Others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, so.
That's it.
The finding of fact, move the amendments. Now, I need a motion to move the bill favorable is amended.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may, before making a motion, I'd just like to clarify for the record that we moved the Planning Commission amendment package. We did not move the Law Department package. And with that said, I'd like to move as amended.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Costello. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who is that?
Mary Pat, second.
Clark, Councilwoman Clark, second. Vice, yes, Sneed?
Yes.
Sneed is a yes. Clark?
Yes.
Clark is a yes. Costello?
Yes.
Costello is a yes. Dorsey?
Mr. Chair, having nothing to do with this property or any objection that anybody has raised to this bill or anything, and just in keeping with the fact that I vote no on all such bills, I'm voting no.
Better be noted that Councilman Dorsey voted no. Middleton?
Yes.
Middleton is yes. Bickett?
Yeah.
Bickett's yes. Councilman Stokes?
Yes.
Stokes is yes. We have, we have seven yes with one no. This bill, City Council Bill 20-0590, passed and will come out September 21st at the next council meeting. This concludes City Council Bill 20-0590. I want to thank everyone for attending. Be careful, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.